I will have a pledge of allegiance and then Mr. Jackie Grauter is going to lead us in prayer.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Grauter.
I would like to thank you every father, we come to you today with many praises, many praises of just a blessing that you've bestowed upon us each and every day. We just thank you for these and those things and we have our thankful hearts, Lord. We just ask that during this meeting, it will be for the best interest of our students, our community, and all our parents and guardians. And we just ask that you go with us through the night and we just thank you for this beautiful day that you gave us. We thank you for another day of life and we just continue to give you praises for all that you do and all that you will do. And we just thank you for sharing us with us as you wanted. He came up on there and he left and with that real crucial, hard times of just giving up his life so we could have that eternity, eternal life. Lord, we just thank you for that and that blood is what it's all about, Lord. We just thank you for that, but as we go through our night, we just ask that you continue to bless us like you have in many, many days before. We just ask that you continue to go with each one of those that have special needs, those that are depressed, those that are hungry, those that are in hell. Whatever situation might it be, you already know what those are and we just, we just continue to leave it in your hands, Lord. We just thank you for, again, for allowing us to have this time together and let us come together and make decisions that are not always popular and always pleasant, Lord. Sometimes we have to do things and we do, but Lord, just continue to go with us wherever we may be as we leave tonight. Give us safety in travel and take us to it for all of them. We just thank you again for another good, safe day you gave us and got your students, most of the, all the students here and all of them. That's a blessing from you, Lord. We just thank you for that. We just, we call upon you too much, but we're needy people. We thank you for each and everything that you share with us, whether it's big or small, we just can't give you enough thanks. So go with us throughout the night and thank you and praise you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Grauter. My bad if y'all need my license. It's charging, it's about to be charged.
Hey, we'll call a meeting to order. Roll call.
Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
And Ms. Wicker.
Present.
All board members present.
Adoption of the agenda.
The meeting and agenda provided for your review. If there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda. I'll say.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker.
Yes. Public comments? Anyone? Okay. Recognition of students?
I'll answer. I'm here to discuss a matter concerning a reprimand to a certain student. I don't want to call the name, but at this time, we're bringing it to the Board of Education. Now, a repeal on from the decision of Rose County High School principal. And you folks have been served with a motion or some type of document which asks for this thing to be brought before you or your attention to that. And we are asking for an opportunity when the time comes around that it's appropriate that we can present what we're talking about here and ask the Board of Education what it concerns and what we would like to do about it. So it is a student here at the high school. And I'll just wait until any kind of further directions from you folks as to when you'd like to take that up.
We were supposed to.
But I do want everyone to know that Board of Education has nothing to do with personnel. It's, it's just not in our duties.
Because certain personnel, certain students is under a reprimand and punishment for activity on school grounds.
You're welcome to state your case. I mean, we, as I said, don't have anything to do with it, but we would like to give you the opportunity.
Well, I'm sure you indicated the area of personnel, you know, obviously it's not employee or personnel of the school system.
Mr. Smith, if I could respond to that.
Yes.
I think what the board chair meant is it involves discipline that was handed out to a student by an administrator who is an employee of the district by the principal.
That's right.
There is no clear process in board policies for that. In fact, any matter involving an issue with a decision by the principal should be taken, as I explained to you today, to the school site-based council and they can review the action of the principal. And then if the party was dissatisfied with the result there, they could then pursue an appeal to the superintendent.
My response to what you just defined is contrary to areas 160 and section three, board five, where it pertains to disciplinary action that's taken by a school official. And any student or family can bring that grievance before the board. It is absolutely jurisdictional and proper that this board or denied to take this on appeal. And the reason I'd like to draw the distinction here, what you said, is laid out clearly in the school's in the school's grievance initiation form, and that's nine dot four two one, uh, four two eight one eighty-two. It is laid out the order which grievances shall, not can, shall be introduced and brought to on field or otherwise to eventually the Board of Education. Now, I think it goes about saying that the fundamental public interest in this institution and in the endeavor to educate our children is emphasized by the fact that Kentucky by its legislation has adopted statutes to create local boards of education that allows and demands that individual citizens of the county shall take up that order so as to protect public interests. Now, you folks are here by virtue and through the authority of that very statute. And ultimately, ultimately, I'll explain the sort of the pecking order how we get here, but ultimately, it is to you folks and to you folks through the public that elected you and put you in this office that the public can have some confidence in what decisions are made in the educational system, not what any one individual states as a person that has no, where there is no limits on that person's control. But eventually, all of that comes back and stems from the authority you have in order to put together a school system which is fair, educational, beneficial, equal to all students. That's race, sexual identity, or whether or not they have religious beliefs that are different than other kids. It's you all that have that authority to put together the system that guarantees our children will have equal protection under the law. Now, this grievance initiation form provides in response to Mr. Gouger's allegations that Aiden, pardon, the child in this case, seens play football. He got charged with having alcohol on school property before a ball game. And he was conducting a semi-low rant in, I wouldn't say rant, but kind of thing to his buddies on the team before a football game that happened a few weeks ago. And he was trying to get them all pumped up and ready to go out and play ball, play together and play fair. And what he was doing was using this as a prop. Now, let me underline one thing that's very important. There was no evidence whatsoever that he ensued any alcohol. He did have a beer and he used it as a prop to get the team revved up. Now, as bad a decision as that was, and his parents, his family, they acknowledge that, that's not the way you do it. But on the same, by the same token, he created no endangerment or he created no issue of harm to anyone. It was private. And while he was able to do this with a number of football players inside the football conference and the coaches weren't in there, as many as they are, I don't know. But I'm not here to criticize coaches. I'm here to advocate for my client's hope for fairness arising out of this situation. Okay? He went out and his teammates went out from the building and there, as I said, there were no coaches in there. There was a little video that was taken and it bears that way. And it's not like we have to take that word for it. But they went out and played football that night and played well, played strong, played with, you know, with meaning, with, you know, with a sense of urgency as they were taught to do. This is the way they are taught. And anybody that's ever played high school sports or college sports in this school knows what I'm talking about. Now, in this case, nothing was said that night. Nothing, after the game, everybody went home. The next day, nothing was said. On the third day, apparently this came up. And I don't know how it was brought up, I don't know who was the originator of the statements about what happened. But my client was not involved in anything anymore after that stunt that he pulled. And, and as we say, everybody in the family and everybody knows and understands that that really wasn't a wise decision. The kids make unwise decisions. Now, we have some rules, regulations been passed, obviously set been passed by this Board of Education, right? To guide us on what is an appropriate way to address these issues and what is the fair way to address them across the board. So we don't have one person over here that gets hammered for the same conduct as somebody over here and gets completely away with it. And there has been students that have gotten away with a lot more than this without any punishment. Now, but that being said, that's not an argument for innocence on his part. He's taken his lumps. He's acknowledged that what he did was wrong. But as far as this board's being able to address the issue in this form, grievance initiation form, I mentioned a minute ago, to show you what position you hold in this. The first one on a grievance, it goes to classroom teacher. That's inadmissible in this circumstance because it was not in the context of classroom activities. It was after-school activities of football athletic contest. Two, the principal. I take a position that that's inadmissible because I understand that the principal basically has actually conveyed his right to make a decision on that to the high school principal. And it is, uh, well, I'm sorry. The principal is the high school principal that made the decision about this. Let me get back on track. The third party is school council, which is inadmissible. So they don't take care of, to my understanding, they don't take care of issues such as we have presented here. The fourth level is superintendent. And I understood, and I may be wrong about this, but this is my information, uh, superintendent, that you advised the principal that it was her trust to take care of and that she could, you know, make the decision on this as she saw the results was consistent with what happened and what needed to be done. So it has a designate of yours that went then with an appeal, an appeal process. The next level was the Board of Education. This is your own forms. Now, for anyone to take a position that this board has no business in trying to talk about this or considering this, I'd like to know why you don't, when your own forms, say that you are the last source of a decision that is to be made on something that is presented as we have for us. That settles that issue. Now, I don't mean to take that far, but I do want to go forward with this grievance. Tell you why this is necessary. In this particular case, he was given a purpose. On the yellow sheet where you have the student signature, he not just getting it, the principal's signed off on it. They started, uh, the student was assigned also the locker room activity. An alcohol violation. And he was given a three-day suspension, which he served already. Started at eight twenty-nine, he did eight thirty-one. But this part is what we don't quite understand. Thirty days of, I'm not sure exactly what this says. Pardon? Yep. Attendance at alternative school. And then on September one. And it says thirty days. And he has been doing that, basically he goes over to alternative school on all days that applies. And he doesn't have any activities over there to participate in. He doesn't have any duties to do anything. He goes over there and he's isolated in solitude and so he does his homework. And he does that for a period of several hours, either time he goes. And then when the time's up, he leaves and he goes home. Now, I don't think that that is necessarily meant to improve his academic performance as it is to give him time to maybe think about the consequences of his actions. And that's all well and good. But it is an interference upon the time that he has away from school when he doesn't have studies to do. Nor is he performing any kind of beneficial service for those children that are in that program. He's not, he has no involvement with the program at all. In fact, he's isolated from it and he's in solitary confinement for all practical purposes. The family believes that that was overly severe while to his, to his benefit. Aiden has done exactly what he's supposed to do without crying and crying about it, but he goes as he's supposed to. But we believe that it's in excess of what is reasonable under the circumstances. As I said, there's no alcohol consumption. Now, I wouldn't be here defending him for bringing this up. If he had drank six pack of beer and went out and tried to play football out there and they're putting other people in danger, putting himself in danger, you know, when these young people get out there and play football, they be business, sold. When they get out there, I can imagine how dangerous you could get otherwise. And that's certainly not accurate. But here's another point on this. None of his coaches that night during that entire game noticed any kind of alcohol smell about him or alcoholic-related activities or disabilities at all. Like I said, it was two days later before the word came around from, I'm sure, one of the other children that were in the football conference. The word got out. Now, in the code that you folks have adopted, only the head, except his boss, the dentist's boss. In this particular code, it provides that the final appeal of any grievances with the Board of Education, there again. I don't see too much argument about that in the paperwork, in the written bylaws, in the written rules and regulations that this board has adopted. We're here for a genuine reason. But it says the decision of the Board of Education is found in the last force of appeal from the school system. Well, all right. So you all have it squarely in your hands to judge and second guess whether or not that sentence or that punishment that was given to Aiden was wholefully excessive. Was it excessive beyond what he did that night in a foolish manner? Yes, he shouldn't have done it. Now, penalties, we have both ranges of penalties that are in this, suggested penalties. And according to the severity of them, that should go across the page from left to right. It shows how those penalties are exacerbated or increased. In this particular case, Aiden has never had not one, any kind of infraction that I'm aware of or anybody is aware of in his entire time he's been in those that guy. And he's seen. I wouldn't want to name names. I graduated from here and I know from the inside why I'm on the chain. And yeah, I've been part of it. But he doesn't, he doesn't have any. Now, on this suggested suspension for use or possession of alcohol or drugs, and remember, this says alcohol or drugs. I have, I still have a problem with that. I take drugs a little bit more seriously than alcohol. Drugs take, incorporates materials that can kill you, but take you better. Okay? But the use of alcohol or drugs, we can't ignore that alcohol. Right here, suspension, second line, second call down, one to five days. He had, what, two days? Three days, okay. He's within that guideline. But to add thirty days on to that of punishment with no, it doesn't seem to be related, no qualified related benefit to the child, nor does it benefit those little children in that classroom or that, in that environment where maybe he could help the folk, but he not allowed to. I mean, my mind reels at what was the goal of that doing? And I think solitary confinement, that's all I can think of. Thirty days of solitary confinement on top of three days suspension. And I don't see that in this punishment ledger here. These guidelines, I don't see that anywhere. Now, again, neither the family nor I am here tonight to criticize the importance of bringing up our children in an educational system that trains kids, tutors into becoming law-abiding citizens. Or knows, nobody in this room, besides Mr. Gouger and I, could tell, nobody here can tell you more about that than what, you know, the disaster our criminal justice system is and how much is going on out there that does not make the papers. And we don't want our children in that situation. And Aiden is not one for eighteen, almost eighteen years of his life. Aiden is one that has never been involved in that either. Thank God. Now, in the situation we have with record unexistence, the reason we're here, we think with the three-day suspension, with the embarrassment, with being accused, and yeah, he had alcohol. He wasn't drinking. He wasn't drinking. He didn't get intoxicated. But with big dog, with alcohol, you can't let that get out of it. You have to stand up and be somebody. This school has done something about it. If your answer is to teach him a lesson, he's got his lesson. If your intent is to make sure that others don't get into the same bad decision-making, regardless that he was trying to pump up his team, regardless of the fact that they get out there and work. You know how they do after in the hot summer, all summer long sweating, you know, and doing push-ups and getting your lifting weights and then running and doing that. It's a torturous route. You work young, you die for it. But the point is, is that they are standouts for the community of our youth. And they are to be recognized for that because they do. Because they do give themselves and they do have rules. And by and large, most all of them obey those rules. And so Aiden, but he had this one slip. Everybody on the team knows that. All the kids at his school, it's not a team. Everybody that's involved in the school process has heard something about this. Words got written, that's not to be tolerated. Our department is interpleaded. He's an intelligent young man. If you wanted to learn the lesson, you should see him. Think he's going to do this again, you're badly disabled. He has accomplished what this rule of attempts to set forth. It's a guideline on how to handle these things. And how to handle them with not only firmness, to say, certain activities will not be tolerated. And to handle it in a way that's humane. Is enough, is enough. And I ask you before, this Board of Education, you represent every family of Russell County. Your child in Russell County, every one year tonight. You represent them. You have the not only authority, but obligation. That's the tough part that comes with the job when you run for office. That's the better thing than if I had to run for. But it's part of the job, I get it. So does the family. Our plea to you in this appeal that has been brought pursuant to the guidelines of this county. That is the County Board of Education. Is that he be given a reprieve for the balance, uh, of his time that he's supposed to spend now as of today. And that he had that, and I've opposed it, opposed it to the superintendent and to the principal. Why don't we, do like we do in court, let's suspend the balance of that impunishment. Since he's gone through it without any problems, without any questions. He's done exactly what he's supposed to do. Leave it hanging over his head, suspend it at this time. If there's no further violations, it will expire when he graduates and is coming from the spring semester. Now, that doesn't do away with punishment. But it certainly does leave an handle where if he forgets about it, it's his own fault. And I'm, I'm trying to come up with something that covers both your concerns, the parent's concerns, the family's concerns, and Aiden's concerns. Do you have any questions? That's all I have to say.
Uh, you said that the alcohol bottle or container showed, was it, actually there was alcohol in it?
There was, there was a beer in the bin.
Was it a can? Was it open or full or what?
By my understanding, it's open.
It's open?
Yep.
Was anything in it?
I wasn't there.
I mean, do you know if there was anything, anybody see what the contents was? Could it have been water, Pepsi or?
I don't know.
Or it could have been beer or anything, yeah?
I, I don't know what was in it and, and frankly, I don't know if he actually popped, you know, a tab on it or not. I don't know that much.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, you know, the one thing I'm, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that for a football game, that can lead to a very, a fairly serious situation if a person goes out there, you know, under the influence of a free young person. And, you know, something get hurt.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a thing. If it, it was a terribly misguided attempt to pick up his, his co-players, pick them up and round up and go out there and why he used that prop, nobody will ever know.
Mm-hmm.
But he knows now that it was wrong. Does that any question? And so, you know, if he's learned, if he intended to have him learn a lesson, I, I think the board can probably take a test on this issue and address that.
So he did not consume any of the alcohol?
None.
He had the can there?
That, from all of the information I had, it was none. And, and obviously, he wasn't under the influence equating the whole game. There was no sense of him being awkward, dizzy, you know, unstable, nothing. Nothing. He played the whole game, I mean, you know, just, well, it was a normal, usual game.
Mr. Smith, the only, the only problem is, uh, this is the wrong form. And, you know, you, you make some good points, uh, as you're very capable and prone to do. Uh, but I, I believe it's the wrong form. And I know you didn't overlook this intentionally, but if you look at the grievance form that was filed, it says at the very beginning that a student, uh, can question application of board policy, which that's not an issue, or an administrative rule or procedure. And that student is entitled to a decision at the lowest administrative level. And the form that you, uh, referenced, the grievance initiation form, level one is classroom teacher. Level two is principal. And if the grievance invol-, uh, centers around action taken by the principal, then the appeal is to level three, the next level, which is the school council.
Well, he said that.
Nick did say that.
He said that.
Do you all entertain or sponsor that?
The school council, I'm assuming that is the site base council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were told today by site base members that, um, this is not within the council's jurisdiction. Individual disciplinary issues cannot be discussed, nor should individual student and or family issues concern us. This is under KRS one sixty. That the site base has no, um, they have no, they can't discuss it at all.
As the site base, the site base council has not met, right? They meet Wednesday.
This, right, but it, I mean, they, they, they can't even look at this because it is pertaining to an individual student.
And I think the process is set, uh, if it's questioning the action of the, of the principal, it goes to the site base. If they're not satisfied with that, they could come directly to the superintendent. Then they could come to the full board if, if they choose. And then the board has a decision whether or not to act upon that. Uh, I mean, I, I think that's the process that's in place.
I think, Mr. Cooper, that your point, that you believe is well-taken, is, is not applicable in this case. Where we tried to approach them and, and go through them as the next avenue that was listed here. They rejected it and said they had no jurisdiction to do it on the individual student. Now.
Can they do that with that rule?
That doesn't leave us with much of any options except you folks. Now, in other words, you might say they summarily, they summarily rejected our request for a, an appeal or evaluation of the punishment that he got. That's all I can get out of it. And if you go, uh, and, and you ask the district board, and he says, "I can give you that kind of relief for whatever reason," that's a no. So in, in all, in all due respect to the people who argued, we intended to, they rejected it. And so we go to the next level of authority, which does have the right to hear this, and that's you.
Well, no, the next level of authority is the superintendent.
Well, but as I said, the superintendent delegated, is interesting thing. And it says here, designated superintendent, designated, his designation was the principal. He designated with authority to the principal to decide what would happen to this case. And so there was no basis going to him or review of his own designation to her.
Sir, excuse me, could I ask you a question? Can you, you took it to the site base, but were they meeting as a whole so that they could make a decision?
We were, we were told that it was that they are not allowed to discuss as a council member per site base. They cannot discuss individual students by names. The council can only discuss the number of students and the number of boys and girls in the classroom. As an example while we're here, for a sample, any student or family that disagrees with the consequences administered by a teacher or principal may appeal the decision at the next regular, regularly scheduled site base decision-making council meeting. Under their laws, is it allowable or unallowable? We have been told and it is highlighted on the education website, it's unallowable. This is not within the council's jurisdiction and individual or disciplinary issues cannot be discussed, nor should individual student and or family issues or concerns.
And those, I don't care, Ms. Wick. Those same issues have never been brought before the board individually unless they were in a closed session for an expulsion hearing. So besides that, it's always been my understanding that boards, I know there's the grievance procedure, but we were always under the impression that wasn't necessarily applicable to individual student discipline. Because the only time the board addresses individual student discipline is when a student has been recommended for expulsion. Because otherwise, I mean, just the logistics of, of, of appealing a principal's decision, we could be tied up with that every month if that were, with that within our prevy, but, I mean.
I understand that, because I did when I, when I first began, asked whether or not the, uh, the council wanted to, uh, go into the executive section to discuss this, and I was sure that it was a court, my statement, what we were, we were here about, so that's what I did.
I think his recommendations on, is very valid. I think it's, sounds very reasonable to me. Because he has served, I know that. And if he hasn't consumed, I didn't know that he hadn't consumed. I think it sounds.
It is, it is.
I like your recommendation.
I agree.
I like your recommendation.
I agree with, Ms. Wilson.
I think you can table it until you hear from the president. I think that would be a good, a good question.
To do what? What now?
You can table the issue until you can have a meeting.
I'll put in my permission or not?
I don't know what he's gonna like. No, no, I didn't say that they need to hear this. I think you can table it until you have an opportunity to schedule a meeting or hear from the president.
Schedule, especially in.
You don't do it yourself. From your.
Could I have a motion to the effect that we table this until we can have a, a called meeting and discuss it? Just with the principal, the president.
What'd she say?
Can we have a motion to have, to table this, to have a call, I mean, to have a, until we have a call and table?
I'll make the motion, we table it till we get some more information on it, information and more details and more, uh, authority at the chain of command.
Second.
Yeah.
I know, but I mean, this is what we talked about here, we need meetings to say. If the book says it comes to the final decision, comes to the board, uh, we are the board.
But, okay, uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Jolie?
No.
Ms. Verinda?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wick?
Yes. And I promise you, it won't be long. We'll have a meeting soon as we can.
We may want to talk to the parents about the, we don't have to right now, but availability of time. And I could, you could ask them stuff like that.
My screen's gone off, it's all. Yep.
You can have that touch.
Now it's his number. Ready to launch.
Yep. I think only two could.
Recognition of students.
Do we need any of the other certificates besides what you and I, the two, okay?
I'd like to, uh, say hello to the board and to everyone here. My name is Hannah England and I'm the Gifted and Talented Coordinator for Russell County. And, uh, Miss Sutie Stevens is back here just to take some pictures. She is the Gifted and Talented Teacher for Russell County. And we're just excited to take this opportunity to recognize a few of our students who has accomplished, who have accomplished many wonderful things this summer. Um, due to banned practice and basketball games and, and siblings having conflicts that we don't have many here that's able to come tonight. But we, I would still like to recognize those that were not here and those that are here. So first I'd like to recognize Chloe Bailey. She is an eleventh grader here at the Russell County High School. She was the recipient of the Wicker Quinn Vampy Scholarship. And so if you don't know much about the Wicker Quinn Family Foundation, we're very fortunate to have that, um, that private foundation set up by the Wicker Quinn family that has offered us funds, uh, to provide scholarships, to provide, uh, we were able to purchase, uh, Chromebooks, uh, and to use in other capacities. But because of that, Chloe has actually been a, been the recipient for the past two years. It's about a thirty-two hundred dollar value per year that, and it's because of the scholarship that Chloe was able to attend. Um, and if she was here tonight, she would speak on what a wonderful, wonderful opportunity it was. And how she's made lifelong friends, uh, it has, uh, you know, she was interested for a while in Gaten. And, um, I, I think it, it is just a wonderful opportunity. So that would not have been possible without the Wicker Quinn Family Foundation. But, uh, I would just like to recognize Chloe tonight, she was unable to be here with us. Uh, and if you're unfamiliar from what Vampy is, is a three-week academic summer camp that is held at Western campus. Uh, and it's for students who've completed grades seven through ten. Uh, and they were able to choose an area of learning, a focus to last for the three, three weeks. So, uh, we're very proud and thankful for that for, for Miss Chloe. Uh, second, I would like Ms. Abigail Boggs and Ms. Rachel McQuarrie to come up here with me. Uh, not to put these bright young ladies on the spot, but we were very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with, um, WKU in the launch of their Project Launch Plus program. And so that is a federal grant that focuses on talent development for young people of high ability. And so these students were able to sign up for this, these programs. Um, and we had some, we have a few more that were unable to be here tonight. Brody Brown, Kayden Toler, Savannah Kisslin, and Sierra Downs. And with them being, uh, sixth grade, the, uh, Javis Grant that is part of the Project Launch Plus fully funded their opportunity to take the Icel test, which is actually an eighth grade level test. Uh, and it, and it compares them to eighth graders and high, uh, ability students of their age. And they were also offered to put their name in a random drawing, um, for a one-week summer camp at WKU. And so Rachel was, uh, lucky, the lucky winner, her name was drawn out. And she was able to attend this one week camp, uh, that was surrounded with, uh, like-minded peers. And she was able to explore different interests and topics. And then I think they had some social activities for the afternoon. And I won't ask her to speak unless she's comfortable with it. But, uh, I did ask her a couple of weeks ago when we had gifted, "How was it?" And she said, "I loved it." And the great thing too is that with, through this program, she's able to attend next year as a seventh grader as well. So this is just a wonderful opportunity and I just could not be prouder. Uh, I mean, they should be teaching gifted, not me. And that, uh, Russell County has a very bright future ahead. So the board has gotten all a little something.
Certificates, I got Abigail's first right here.
Alright, Abigail?
No order. Congratulations.
And then Ms. Rachel.
And we'll get the other certificates.
Thank you so much.
Would you care, I'm going to put you on the spot, I didn't ask you to do this, but would you care to share with the board about the Chick-fil-A leadership? Would you care, not to put you on the spot, I didn't ask you to do this, but would you care to share with the board about the Chick-fil-A leadership?
Oh, yes. I might pick one, Miss Suzy. We are so excited about this opportunity. Miss Suzy had reached out, we had heard about it through a meeting through Gifted we had, that Chick-fil-A sponsors a leader academy nationwide. And as you know, Russell, or not Russell County, that would be dreaming, but Somerset recently has a Chick-fil-A move to the area. And so Miss Suzy was able to reach out, I give her the credit, she was the catalyst for this. She was able to reach out to them and they agreed to partner with Russell County High School. So it is new for Russell County High School, it is new for the Chick-fil-A in Somerset. And so what this is, is that the leader academy selects up to 30 high school students. They will start with a big kickoff celebration, which we will invite the board to, it is free Chick-fil-A. And we, we have a total of, I forget how many sets of books, 187 maybe? Around 187 books that we're able to pass out to students of Russell County. All provided and fully funded by Chick-fil-A. And I think at the end of the year, it would be roughly around a $4,000 investment. So after the kickoff event, we will meet with these students once a month. The owner from Chick-fil-A would come down to speak with our students, kind of give her background, her story, how she got into it. And then we will work together to, to do some type of the learning service project for Christmas or December, and then at the end of the celebration. So we're just really excited because as far as I know, this is something that's new to even our area. I don't know of a lot of surrounding areas that's had this opportunity. So, but yes, we called Mr. Ford the other day and I'm like, we've got some big news to share. So we're thankful for his support and we invited you all to come out to our kickoff celebration.
Right, you talked to Karen, you tell her about it?
Not yet, but we will. We'll reach out to tell her. So thank you all so much.
We appreciate all that extra stuff.
Okay, Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition, Mr. Donnie Wilpersen.
I always hate going after Ms. Hannah because she's so young and preppy and pretty and looks so nice up here, but I'm gonna attempt something. First of all, I feel very blessed to be here. I'm representing our CEA, our Education Association here in Russell County.
Ms. Rhonda's the new president of Russell County Education Association.
Even at my old age, I'm a first year president, so anyway. But it was my pleasure. One of the reasons that it is my pleasure so much tonight to introduce this man is when I first started my own career out at Jamestown as an assistant and as a family resource assistant, I served as a after-school childcare teacher. I don't know if you remember that or not. You had a son that was about this high, cute as a button, full of energy. And I got to watch him after school and Mr. Wilpersen would come in and pick him up. And he was one of the most positive people that I can remember meeting out there. He was, he always had a smile, he always was kind, very nice to me. But he's always in a hurry too, he's always in a hurry. So I was, I was very blessed to get to know him in that aspect. And then later I bought kitchen cabinets off him, which I still have, so they lasted very well. I appreciate that. So his reputation precedes him very much so in not only the school system, the community, Kentucky at large, in fact. You might go to a meeting for the state and see Mr. Donnie Wilpersen there. So he is, he is such a positive role model and such a positive person for Russell County and to be a part of our county. Donnie is, he filled out a little thing here about himself, just so I could introduce him. But as I said, his reputation precedes him, he needs no introduction, but I will share some of the things that he's given to me. First of all, he teaches out at Jamestown Elementary. He teaches fifth grade, history, social studies, and reading. This is his 19th year and unlike most teachers, I have taught everything pretty much from first grade all the way up to college. And it seems like every two or three years I rotate into something else. And he has stated that he has been in the same school, same grade, and same subject all 19 years. So that's awesome. That must be doing a pretty good job for at least that. I think maybe they bounced me around to see if I could find my, my good spot.
And only switched the classroom one time.
Oh, wow.
Only switched classroom one time.
So that's amazing, that's amazing. He does have an WKU bachelor's, science, and civil engineering. Do you want me to tell the date of that or do you want me to get that part out? That's in 1977, EKU Master of Arts in Teaching in 2006. And when we asked him, what do you like best about teaching? The satisfaction of bringing to learners of all ages, the excitement, wonder, and knowledge of things they might not otherwise have experienced. What amazing statement. His hobbies, spend a time with two precious granddaughters, taking my other grandkids, and quotes his students, on Kentucky adventures, reading and swimming. And since I've come after him with the students, I have sixth graders always hear about these adventures. And this woman back there, I'm sure is nodding her head, we always hear about Mr. Wilpersen's adventures. I don't know if any of you all know about that, but he spends a lot of outside time with his kids. And that is such a blessing for our students here in Russell County. We're very proud of that. His favorite quote, and I think I'm gonna steal this one, is think for yourself and allow others the privilege of doing so. Mr. Wilpersen, it's my honor to give you this tonight in recognition.
But if, I will say this, the job is easy when you have a wonderful staff, wonderful coworkers, administrators. And most of all, it's easy when you have wonderful students and you have precious kids and it's a labor of love. And I truly do love it and I appreciate KEA and the board and everybody. Recognition, the recognition, seeing the smiles on students' faces is what it's all about. And we always have to keep them first. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you all for serving.
He also takes his students to different sites in Kentucky to see the historical sites. And I think that's wonderful because otherwise disappears, so. Thank you. Approval of the working budget, I don't like, I'll just give it for myself. Approval of the minutes.
No, it's consent.
It's just too far up. Gotta get it back up. Do they like, come, come here?
Yeah, just a consent agenda.
Consent agenda items.
So we, we have the approval of the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and the Treasurers Monthly Report. Ms. Carnes.
The Treasurers Report for the month of August 2022. Balance on heads beginning of the month was $7,805.49. Total receipts for the month were $2,311,532.89. Total of receipts beginning balance, $10,111,538.38. Disbursements for the month were $1,138,853.07. And the balance at the close of the month was $8,972,685.31. And our fund balances for general fund, Fund One, $8,415,337.05. Special projects, Fund Two, a negative $781,907.78. District activity fund, Twenty-One, $10,113.39. Capital latle fund, Three Ten, $140,952. Even. FSPK building fund, Fund Three Twenty, $316,519.29. Construction fund, Three Sixty, $31,117.81. Debt service fund, $400.00. Food service fund, Fifty-One, $837,925.85. New Sherry fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $2,627.70. Total cash and bank for all the funds was $8,972,685.31. And you will notice that finally, after a long time of waiting, our construction fund is in the positive.
We got that, we got that last reimbursement from the state on the grant.
Yes, we do. And of course Fund Two, because so much of that, especially right now while we have the SRF funds and we're spending so much extra and federal than we normally do. And we have to spend it and then get it back. That one runs negative, you know, a lot of the time, but it's really nothing to be concerned about, just the way that we're functions.
We get all that back, right?
We do.
We spend it and request it.
Yeah.
So we need a motion.
Yes. So if there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second it. Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker.
Yes. If, if there's anybody that doesn't want to stay for the whole meeting, you can feel free to go if you, if you are interested, great. Okay, BG fours. Approval of the working budget for SY 2022, 2023, FY 23.
So we've already went through our draft and our tentative, and this is our typical working budget for the year. CAIRS 160.470 requires local boards of education to adopt a working budget. The 2223 working budget being presented must be adopted and then we submit it to, to, to the Kentucky Department of Education by the close of the month, by September 30th. This budget includes revenues and expenditures of $26,374,944. I think Ms. Carnes has just a few talking points about it. Of course, this budget encompasses the raise that was given, you know, for fiscal year 23. So if you look at those totals from last year on, on some of those, that's why the increase between those two columns. Ms. Carnes.
So really that's the major change on this is just we updated for the pretty substantial raise that we gave. We were fortunate that the CERS retirement, all of our classified staff, you know, cooks, bus drivers, instructional assistants, and some others, actually decreased just a tiny, tiny bit. And so it's really more what I would call stable than our actual reduction because going down like less than a tenth of a percent really isn't much, couldn't help a whole lot. But at least that stayed stable and kind of leveled off, so we didn't see a big increase in that cost, which we had the last few years in our working budget. Our SEAC, actually right before we finalized this, they put out the tentative SEAC number, we were just working on forecast number. And unfortunately, our SEAC number did drop about $300,000. I'm pretty sure that was, I looked to see what caused it and it was really all attributable to the fact that our property assessment has grown. And so in the end, we're gonna get less in SEAC, we're gonna get more in our local tax offset because of that. So it's, it's kind of a wash. It's just a, it looks like a reduction, but really it's because it's coming from another source.
And that's part of the state's equalization.
It's part of the equalization process, so no big, you know, no big change there. Everything is, is pretty much the same as what we've had in the budget. There's no, no extra cushion of anything, especially since we after gave, after we gave such a large raise, you know, as I mentioned, that was gonna put, put us right at our capacity for anything, so. And it definitely did. We ended FY 22 with roughly $7 million as our fund balance, which was really good. But this is gonna eat into that for sure this next year. Don't be surprised if it doesn't eat into it, you know, half a million to, to, you know, three quarters of a million dollars by doing the raise. And, you know, that could change a little bit, just see how the year goes out. We could end up with more SEAC money because we won't get our final number on that until probably March, when the year's almost over. So we could see some growth in that still, but it's been pretty stable over the course of the year. We still have some money in here to get a couple of buses for the year. And it's just otherwise pretty much what we've been budgeting for, just our necessities and the rates is really the only change in this budget for this year.
One thing moving forward that Ms. Carnes and I have talked about that will be an item of concern. This is our last year, last year was our last year of counting that 18, 19 attendance. So pre-COVID, the legislature said, okay, for all this time, we know that you have horrible attendance, you're funded on attendance. So we will let you count your 18, 19 school year attendance and you can use that. You can use it for the next year and use it for the next year. Just looking at some rough numbers compared to our attendance then versus we still have absences. I mean, we're holding steady, but it's still not the same it was pre-COVID. That has a potential for substantial implication to the tune of a few hundred thousand dollars of decrease. With that, with that is no longer the option to use that, that amount. So something just to keep in mind going forward because this is the year, unless the state changes something, that that's, that's done away with. This year's for next year will be based on attendance for this year, actual attendance, not that 18, 19 year school year where we had, Ms. Dan, what we typically average, 97, 96, things like that, unless it was flu during the regular season.
At the end of the year, 95 and a half.
Yeah, so 95 and a half, you know, so.
We don't have that this year nowadays.
Not right now, no. It's not, it's, it's not the worst attendance by any, by any means.
It's really close.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So anything else, Ms. Carnes? I'm sorry I jumped in there. Okay. So I recommend approval of the 2022, 2022, 2023, this is the fiscal year 23 working budget with required state contingencies. And I know it's September, but we'll start having this conversation again come January, you know, with that, with that draft. That's typically just a rollover. But revenue and expenditures again equal $26,374,944.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker.
Yes.
Always think that's something, how Ms. Carnes can match that to the dollar, isn't it?
It is amazing.
Yeah. No, she doesn't have a choice. That's what it has to be done. Yeah.
BG fours contract closeouts, Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. If you've not been over there, go look. It's wonderful.
So we're still in the process of closing out that project. It just takes a lot of time when you deal with a large number of contractors. And this is not all of them. We'll still bring some to you all. And I want to note and I want to stress, so you'll see those dollars amounts on those BG four forms, but the payments and everything have already been made. This is simply closeout documentation. This is just a reflection. So all construction related contracts require BG four contract closeout form, building and grounds form to close the individual contracts out. The BG fours reflect any change orders, purchase orders, et cetera, and the total cost for each entity is reflected on the form. And you all have, you had access to all those. So the following are included for the Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center, piles excavating, Gaddy Shamrock, Carmichael Masonry, Structural Steel Services, Dixie Roofing, Bennett's Carpet, listed twice because they had one bid package for the gypsum drywall and ACT and the resilient flooring, the carpet and the tile, McKinney Painting, Stubby, which was the Greenhouse DC Elevator Company, the Daniel Group, Knotts Mechanical, Landmark Sprinkler, and Fay Electrical Services. So I recommend approval of the BG fours for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. And, and to be honest, it's really just a play of paperwork. We just note that that part's done because we've already, we have all the outstanding bills and everything for that project have, have been, have been paid.
I'll make a motion for the approval of BG fours for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center as presented.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook. And Ms. Wicker.
Yes.
Contracts Memorandum of Agreements.
So the following contracts, memorandums of agreement are attached for your review and approval. We have an agreement with Western Tech University for, for professional education preparation partnership agreement. This is one's very similar what we have with Midway, Lynn's Wilson College, Campbellsville. Just so we can allow their students in their teacher prep program to come into our schools to observe, you know, student teaching participation, all those types of things. Stirrup Change Hope and Healing Center LLC is another agency that provides counseling for our students. We have the Lake, excuse me, the Lake Cumberland Area Development District Memorandum Agreement, Agreement for the Grandparents Support Group. I'm gonna give a shout out to Ms. Sherry Coffey. She coordinates that for us, has meetings with our grandparents, and she welcomes anybody that's non-. with our grandparents, and she welcomes anybody that's non-traditional raising children. And Russell County has a large population besides just grandparents, classroom teachers, and you all can attest to that. We have a large number of people besides just grandparents. It's aunts, uncles, and many folks that come together to take on that parenting role and raise our kids. So I've attended some of those. It's a, it's a great, it's a great support group. And she always feeds them. And then we have an agreement with locally-operated career and technical ed center for department funding, one that, Ms. Rita in here, yeah, she said for thirty years she's been waiting for this. The state legislature has allocated Russell County Schools two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this school year. We hope to have a very similar amount. It could be a little changes either way depending on the program participation for school year twenty-three, twenty-four. But this is, this is not funding for the ATC because ATC is a state-run facility, but this is funding for all of our career and technical ed programs. So that's our ag programs, our teacher pathway programs that's new, that's up and running, and we're going to hear from them at its future board meeting. We've got engineering program, we've got marketing, computer science. Ms. Rita?
Marketing.
Yeah, marketing. Got them?
A.
Yeah, no, yeah. One thing that if you all do approve this on that part, if you, I know you looked at the budget that we had to submit that to make up for the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars several, several years ago. Of course, by law, ag teachers have to work two hundred and forty days. That's by law. So we fund that. But if you'll note this on this, there is an allocation for salaries several years ago, and the CTE and this, this funds can be used for that. We had, back when things were really dire, those, the CTE staff had their extended days. They were cut. So if you all approve this, I will come back at a future board meeting and ask you to amend the extended days for the folks in the career and technical programs, looking at five days each. And it's a lot to do with their clubs and things like that during the summer. But this funds can use that. And then most, the bulk of this would be dedicated to equipment and supplies for the programs, over two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So it's really a negligible cost. But this is, we appreciate the legislature doing that, and a lot of interest in CTE. And so I think it's no guarantee, but I think it's something the legislature would hopefully entertain every biennial for the budget. So really, really exciting. Ms. Rita, anything else to add with that? Okay.
Right now, it's just for one year.
Well, definitely for this school year, yes. But for all practical purposes, we've essentially been assured unless they do something with the funding, you'll be there for next school year because it is in the state budget. Yeah. But then beyond that, we don't know.
Because it's a biennial.
Yeah, biennial, exactly. Yep. So we're really, really excited about that. So I recommend approval of the contracts or, and/or memorandums of agreements that's been approved by the board attorney.
I might motion to approve the contract memorandum of agreements.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Got a pound of that pretty money.
No, not two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Out-of-state overnight trips.
The following groups have submitted trip requests that include overnight travel. Jakes Elementary School, fourth grade, Mr. Brian Moore has written a grant. He gets this transportation, all of this funded for the fall of Ohio, October twenty-seventh, and it is in Clark School, Indiana, so it requires board approval. Russell County High School Y Club, this is overnight trip, so it requires your approval, but it's a yearly trip. The Kentucky Youth Assembly. Russell County Lady Laker Basketball, their annual trip during the Smoky Mountain Classic Basketball Tournament in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, December the nineteenth to the twenty-second. Russell County Lady Laker Softball, April first to the eighth for Florida Beach Bash in Destin, Florida, I'm sorry. Russell County High School Seniors Explorers, May seventh to eleventh in the spring for the New York City trip. And then the Russell County Middle School Academic Team have opportunity to participate on October the second, oh, twenty-second, sorry, for a quiz bowl tournament in, at the Gallatin High School in Gallatin, Tennessee. So I recommend approval. Yeah, I'm really excited for the academic team to have that opportunity as well. I recommend approval of the out-of-state and/or overnight trips as presented. And I will note, as you see this, you'll see, we're phasing out that old form, and everyone's about, so you'll see two different kinds of forms where it says school-related trip, and that's because that form's been updated. So we're in the process of reminding people to switch over to the new form, and that's, that's why you see two different types of forms in there.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state and overnight trips as presented.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Shortened school day and/or week.
Local boards of education must approve requests for students to have a shortened school day and/or week. The decision is determined by the needs of the student. The documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. And just as a reminder, these students are in special education. The ARC, the Admissions and Release Committee makes that decision, and this is retroactive once the board approves it to that, to that date. So I recommend a shortened school day and/or week for the following students: IDs twenty-three dash zero one, IDs twenty-three dash zero two, IDs twenty-three dash zero three, and IDs twenty-three dash zero four. And the necessary documentation is forwarded to the Kentucky Department of Education. And as a reminder, that's represented for school year, fiscal year twenty-three. And so this is our, one, two, three, four, this is our fourth students that we've had, first four students that we've had for this school year. Your paperwork included all the students' information, redacted information as far as their name and stuff, but it did include the rationale behind that.
I'll make a motion to that effect. I'm not going to read all the ID numbers.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Second reading, policy updates, zero three point nineteen, professional development.
Yeah, the first reading for updates to policy zero three point nineteen, professional development, was held on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is the second reading for final approval to the changes for policy zero three point nineteen. The draft policy is again attached for your review. I recommend the revisions to policy zero three point nineteen, professional development being approved as presented. So once you all approve this, then we send it back to Kentucky School Boards Association, and then they'll incorporate it as, as part of our past policies.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the policy update, professional development.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Comprehensive district improvement plan, the CDEP committee.
So our board policy zero one dot one one one, and I attach that for your review, requires the Russell County Board of Education to approve the district planning committee. The district planning committee representative of the community in the school district shall be appointed by the superintendent and approved by the board to develop, monitor, and annually update a comprehensive district improvement plan. That's what we abbreviated CDEP. As stated therein, the committee shall include teachers, principals, council member, and other school leaders, parent professionals, central office administrators, administrators, board member, classified staff, parents, community representatives, and high school students. So the following have agreed to serve on our district planning committee, and I've attached the complete board policy, again, has been attached. Holly Pierce as a teacher, she's at Russell County Middle School. Ms. Kimberly Webb is principal, of course, she's at Salem Elementary School. Joy Shear, a council member at Russell County High School. Other school leader, Danielle Helm, at Russell County Middle School, she's the youth service center director. But Ms. Jennifer Blakely is a parent professional at James Elementary School. Central office administrator, Ms. McFaul, and administrator, Ms. Cindy Dameron. Board member, Joy Wilson. Classified staff member, Ms. Lori Fortune at Russell Springs Elementary School, and parent and instructional coach, Dr. Brooke Bartrug. Community representative is Christina Daffren from the Russell County Public Library, and a high school student, Ms. Ella Pierce from Russell County High School. So I want to, again, sincerely appreciate everyone that has, has agreed to serve on that committee. I recommend approval of the district planning committee as presented. You all know we'll work on that this fall and then bring it back to you typically at the December board meeting for approval. Ms. McFaul, did you have anything to add to that?
Tell them how interesting it is.
Willing to serve.
Yes. Some people weren't willing to serve, were they, Ms. McFaul? So, yeah, yeah. I understand. People, it takes a little bit of time.
I make a motion to approve the district planning committee as presented.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Does it matter if I'm on there? Can I still go ahead and vote yes?
You can.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Personnel report.
Yeah.
Update, okay. Update, Russell County Schools twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan.
You did that well. That's my fault. So Senate Bill one passed during a special Kentucky legislative session in September of twenty twenty-one, requires that all public school districts in Kentucky develop a COVID-nineteen operations plan, and we've termed that Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. Every six months, that has to be brought back to the board for review and any changes. And then we submit that, we submit it to KDE. They did not approve it, but it's kind of like a storehouse, and part of that bill, Senate Bill one during that special session, required that. And then we provide the updated version on our website. So I'll just put a note here. Of course, the plan is attached for your review and approval and all that. But the most significant change to this plan was it incorporates a latest guidance that quarantine is not routinely recommended following exposures to COVID-nineteen for people without symptoms. So, you know, in the past, if you had a member of your household, or if you sat next to a student in class, then they were quarantined. And now that does not have to happen unless you're showing symptoms. That's one of the most significant changes of the plan. Of course, you all have the full plan, and we've been implementing that since that guidance came out. So I recommend the revised Russell County Schools twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. Again, that was our term for what's dubbed the Safe School Operations Plan be approved as presented.
Of course, not requiring the mask.
No, no, we took that away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We never bring that back.
This is keeping our kids in school.
It is, yes.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend as presented.
I'll second it.
Ms. Joy, you second?
Yeah.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Personnel report.
Travis Miller resigned from Russell County Middle School Athletic Director. Michelle Mann resigned as an instructional assistant at James Elementary School. Whitney Wilson, we know her as To Neil, was hired as a James Elementary School preschool interdisciplinary early childhood education teacher. That was initially a point five position, but since that time, that's, that's a full-time position. Brittany Sterns hired as James Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Mika Wind hired as James Town Instructional Assistant. Taylor Anderson and Emily Huddlestone both hired as James Elementary School Instructional Assistants. Carly Stockton hired Salem Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Sean Coffey hired as Russell County Middle School Athletic Director. Malcolm, we know him as Mick, hired as the Russell County High School Career Support Specialist. Heather Wolf is hired as the Russell County High School Instructional Assistant. Addison Loy hired as a substitute teacher, and Genevieve Carter hired as a classified, excuse me, substitute. And Mr. Sloan and I will be, we have our first, he's had some training, but I will have to be with him on Thursday. Really, the expectations of the grant for that, for that position and what all will be doing in Lexington all day.
That's a new position.
Pardon me?
That's a new position.
Yeah, that's the contract you all approved last year, or last week, or last month, with the Department of Labor grant for four years.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm expecting to find some more details out when we go to that meeting on Thursday. Also, I've sent you all this draft DFP on the email when I got the feedback from the Kentucky Department of Education. I just want to mention this now. It was not required to come back to you all for approval, but I appreciate our construction consultant catching that error to where it was, it's done on Excel with architects, and the need was actually left off a big column on the calculation of the need. And your higher your need is for the district as far as facilities, then the higher your offers of assistance are from the school facilities commission. And since, since it was just, they considered a typographical error, they told me that I did not have to reconvene the LPC, or the board didn't have to formally approve it. But I wanted you all to know that this is the corrected version. It does not change any of the projects or anything like that. It was literally a calculation error on the Excel template. So I just wanted to mention that on the public comment. Part with you.
Okay, our next thing is public comment. What's your idea?
I've got two comments. One is on the contract closeouts. I assume the closeouts include the contractors who require them to clean up whatever residue was left. And I ask because at the workforce center, excuse me for using a short name.
Yep.
There's a Branson office trailer. I assume that what it was for, and I can understand what's there, but now it's sitting there with grass growing around it, weeds, and there's what I would call a pile of trash right there. Not paper trash, I mean, it's construction trash.
There's some metal, some rebar, some brick, and they're.
I hate to see us have to pay to do it again to somebody who's going to play the contract game. The last one is on the COVID, and I don't know exactly what the new plan is, but ten years ago when we started this, or at least it seems that long.
It does.
If somebody in your class or somebody at school was tested positive for COVID, there was tracking and tracing, and other students would be notified and parents that, okay, your child was near somebody with COVID, do they have any symptoms, or have they had vaccinations? Is that still taking place?
No, not to that extent now. It's just kind of the expectation, kind of, unfortunately, if you're in school or any public area, you're likely to be exposed to it and go with that. Yeah, that's.
No, I understand.
Yeah, there's no, there's.
Which you're not doing, that's what.
Yeah, there's none of the contact tracing and kids having to quarantine and things like there, there were in the past.
Well, I understand not quarantining. I'm not so sure the notification would help some parents or students.
The only exception we've done with that is like if there's a large number, you know, like if there's a sports team or a particular classroom that had a large outbreak, then, you know, we notify. But otherwise, it's just, that child obviously is isolated. Sometimes we use quarantine and isolation interchangeably, but isolation is when you're positive, and quarantine is when you've been exposed. But otherwise, it's executed like that. Yeah, unless there's that big outbreak. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I understand you folks to say that you're going to take this under attack and refund the things. Maybe Murray made some kind of post that effect. Would be a decision coming from this board, or this issue we brought up.
It's my understanding the motion was to table it until they could hear from the school principal.
No.
Or schedule a special. Schedule a special call meeting.
Schedule, yeah, special call board meeting.
Yeah. So there will be a special call meeting to consider it further. They're asking.
Which could be this week or next.
I didn't mention that. But to show you what, a studious and serious young man that really is, Aiden was taken dual-credit college classes as first semester senior, and he's not getting that instruction now, of course, because he doesn't have the time to work it in with his obligation to go over to after school. And so.
Not after school, alternative school.
Yeah, he's not getting the classroom instruction and what that amounts to. But he is, he is a person of value, and he is a good kid. He's never had any problems like this before. We appreciate your concern about this and your conscientious elaboration and decision about what you think. So with that, I agree, and I think we're making it, but you're.
Well, we do. I have two boys of my own, so I know how things happen. Well, we do, I have two boys of my own, so I know how things happen, but we will not, we'll, we'll get to this just as soon as we can get everybody together, and, but we want to give everybody a fair chance to state their problem.
And Ms. Wicker, I must say this, because Ken is a good friend of mine, I can't believe he's retired.
He's not retired. He's in a, he was in a court case last, last week.
Yeah.
But he's trying to retire.
Well, I, I want to comment when I say that he's too young to be doing that, doing that type of thing.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Brenda, I guess it's up to you.
I'll make a motion with your.
All in favor?
Raise your hands.
Okay. 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 So we need to, we need to skate balls.